... 62. Office going. This dad was spitting out some excellent classes. I said, "Do you have any questions, man?" And everyone's on the top of their hands. That's almost right.
Everybody please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we make a roll call, please?
Vader.
Present.
Hicks.
Present.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Here.
Louder.
Present.
Farmer.
Present.
Householder.
Present.
Next one is approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add an A under seven and we'll move everything else down in a moment of silence for Norma Soderby.
Okay.
Support that.
Seven A and then just move everything down.
Is that your motion? Did Steve second it?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Can you get approval for the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept the amended agenda.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next one would be approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting on January 8th, 2018.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes from the January 8th meeting as presented.
I support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next one is approval of accounts payable payroll.
We'll start with the big one first here. General checking two, payables in the amount of $85,858.76 with the payroll weekend in 12/25/2017 to 1/7/2018 in the amount of $21,028.49 and debit card purchases in December 2017 in the amount of $283.45 for a grand total of $107,170.70. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Still pay Adam Marsh that much money in his law grant, we still need to get him in here to do a presentation of their findings and everything else. Right, so maybe our next meeting we get him in here.
What's 18, some health insurance, water and sewer insurance coverage, what does that cover?
That's your water leak.
That's the, oh, the water leak, okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Next one is approval of accounts payable payroll. Let's start with the big one first here. General checking two, payables in the amount of $85,858.76 with the payroll weekend in 12/25/2017 to 1/7/2018 in the amount of $21,028.49 and debit card purchases in December 2017 in the amount of $283.45 for a grand total of $107,170.70. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Still pay Adam Marsh that much money in his law grant, we still need to get him in here to do a presentation of their findings and everything else. Right, so maybe our next meeting we get him in here.
What's 18, some health insurance, water and sewer insurance coverage, what does that cover?
That's your water leak.
That's the, oh, the water leak, okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Next one from our TNA number two account, these are winter tax distributions from 12/29/17 to 1/5/2018 to the ABB Joint Fire Board, Bangor Public Schools, the City of Bangor, Senior Services of Bambiren County, Bambiren County Treasurer, Bambiren District Library and Bambiren Intermediate School in the total amount of $31,363.69. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Last one? Okay, the last one is from general checking account two, it's for our retiree benefits in the amount of $9,552.52, I make a motion that we pay that. Second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Next one from our TNA number two account, these are winter tax distributions from 12/29/17 to 1/5/2018 to the ABB Joint Fire Board, Bangor Public Schools, the City of Bangor, Senior Services of Bambiren County, Bambiren County Treasurer, Bambiren District Library and Bambiren Intermediate School in the total amount of $31,363.69. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Next one from our TNA number two account, these are winter tax distributions from 12/29/17 to 1/5/2018 to the ABB Joint Fire Board, Bangor Public Schools, the City of Bangor, Senior Services of Bambiren County, Bambiren County Treasurer, Bambiren District Library and Bambiren Intermediate School in the total amount of $31,363.69. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Last one?
Okay, the last one is from general checking account two, it's for our retiree benefits in the amount of $9,552.52, I make a motion that we pay that. Second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Last one?
Okay, the last one is from general checking account two, it's for our retiree benefits in the amount of $9,552.52, I make a motion that we pay that. Second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
I lied, there's one more. On our roads account, to Whitman and Associates for Construction on Center Street Project, there's a hundred dollar bill, I make a motion that we pay that. I second that motion.
Any discussion? Is this the final or what's the last hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's it. It's all engineering.
Okay, roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Next one is other regular business resolutions, proclamations, reports and presentations. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence in the summary. All right, thank you, thank you everybody for the support. The next one is the student report.
Maybe Lynn forgot, it is brand new, so, do you know anything?
So, I did speak with Lynn, he is, the students saved the report Monday night, weren't there, so she was gonna come tonight, but from here on out, he's going to put together a half a page bullet highlights of everything that's going on at the school, and so either somebody's gonna come or I'm gonna present it, and I told him that, because I'm gonna do that at the other township board level as well, so everybody in the entire area is getting update feedback on what's happening at the school district and what they're doing, so, right now, he's in the middle of a onsite review for special education and everything, right now started today, so I'm sure he had his hands full doing that for the next three days, so, but from, so starting next month, we'll have a, like a half a pager.
Okay. Thank you, there. Next one is the Department of Public Works report, monthly factory sampling results by request. Any questions, comments on that?
I have, I have two questions, after our emergency, were the water leaks for those our leaks for the homeowners and also the sewage in the basement, were those ours or were those the other ones? I think they were the homeowners, weren't they? Yeah, because we didn't have to, yeah.
Any more questions, comments on it? Moving down the list, and the next one is from the fire department report, any questions, comments on that?
Can I add one, one thing to that?
Yep.
We did vote to purchase some ice rescue suits for training for the guys, ice rescue is something that we've never been held in, we've always relied on other, you know, other departments, and every year seems like we're getting more and more, so we did purchase two ice rescue suits and we're sending two guys to Wisconsin, Minnesota for training the end of February, and then we're teaming up also with South even next month to do dual training for ice rescue, so we'll have the essential, essential ice rescue stuff available starting next month.
Right. Any other questions, comments?
I just thought it was very sweet that, that Donna, you know, offered all of your offer, your thoughts and prayers for this life, so I thought that was very sweet.
Thank you, Mike.
A question, new business fee, rental inspections for the city, does that have anything to do with the occupancy?
That's been changed.
Is it the same time, that's changed, right?
Yeah, it's changed, yes.
That's what I thought.
Any else standing?
No, I'm good there.
Okay, moving down, the next one's the DDA report.
I'm working in attendance at the last meeting, so, and I don't have any minutes.
You don't have any minutes?
Oh, we do have the minutes, don't we?
I look, I mean, I can look at the manager's report, but...
Do you want me to go grab just a sample? I'll report on it. I'll try. I'll be scratching that meeting.
I seen it on here yesterday, ma'am.
Oh, I know, I thought...
You always been studying.
So many typos or anything, he can't comment on them.
It's not...
Aren't you guys doing?
Yeah.
You don't remember anything to go there?
No, we've talked about, you know, the potential sale of the...
We appointed officers.
Yep, what's that, you reported new officers.
Officers.
So, our, our new chairman's here tonight, right? And we, our new, our vice chair is still Ken.
Ken.
And then our new treasurer is Mr. Bill Stanslowski.
Excellent.
So, those are our new leaders of the DDA at this point, and we introduced our new members, which is Billy was one, Dan Farmer was the other, and the gentleman from...
David Hardy.
Dave.
Yeah, David Hardy.
We talked about the ice dam on the new building.
Yep.
And by the time Regina got a hold of somebody, it had already melted.
It solved itself.
Yep, solved itself.
It was fixed, and the phase one on the Jerry's Garage. And Jerry's Garage.
Yep. Excellent. Any other questions, comments on the DDA report? Then moving down the list, the parks and recreation report, do we have anything at this point?
Uh, no meeting.
No meeting. The next one, we do have the manager's report, 2017 progress report, anything you want to say on that, Regina?
Last year Freddie had said we should do the year in review, and so I tried to remember what all we did in 2017, and I'm already starting in 2018, so that as we go along, we add things to it, but I did make a list and I didn't know if I missed anything, but we do have the new cemetery software, and that was a donation, $6,000 donation from Dana Gatman, and we're just been putting information into that, we got the two new DPW trucks with the USDA grant, we've got the new leaf vacuum, we've got a new park millage, Center Street was done, patching potholes, EDC and the planning commissions are now fully, the boards are full and they're meeting, we've got surveillance cameras in Lyons, Lyons Park, we strike the roads, we're instituting medical marijuana ordinance, the industrial park lots are all spoken for, the green doors open, DDA completed 135 West Monroe, and now they have a sales offer on that, the DDA completed their parking lot, the dip at Arlington and Division is repaired, the DDA has started their update plan with McKenna and Associates, we've got a new door, a paint job on the interior of the building and the entrance, and the power washing was done, the exterior there around by the doorway, our ordinance book pages were updated, we had asbestos removed from the city hall building, we've got a new copier lease agreement that saves us enough that we're like getting the police department one for the, for free practically compared to the other price, we had swapped out the charger for the Crown Victoria, so now we're not always paying for, we have for repairs, uh, police department, we have new radios and body cams for the police department, we've got school crossing guards at the corners for the kids, and the Arlington Hills Cemetery entrance was paved, and I couldn't think of any more of it.
Good job.
That's a lot of hard work, thanks a lot for the city hall, all the council members.
Good job.
Making more progress, people noticed that, thanks a lot Regina and the ladies on the city hall. Any other questions, comments on the manager's report?
Where was the asbestos removed at? What was it?
It was all through, mostly in the ceilings, on that old heating system.
I can put that down, your furnace and stuff up in the city hall.
Yeah.
Going down the list, was anything for the DDA liaison report?
Uh, they're just, been catching up on some maintenance items, either plowing snow or they've been picking on different maintenance items, there is some concern on what's being ditched, potentially what would be discharged into the sewer system, we definitely don't want anything that has any fertilizer in there, because that will increase the algae growth in the lagoons, and if, if it tests for fertilizer, if they test it daily, then we cannot discharge that into the river, and, so, particularly with the Grove Centers and the industrial park, they want to make sure that just water from the sinks and the toilets are the only thing going into the city sewers, and nothing from the irrigation process going into the city sewers which may contain traces of fertilizer.
You guys take that since you know more about it now, is that what you do?
I can only speak for the facility that we're putting up, but we will have a total reclaim, we're mostly growing with organics, we're reclaiming our dirt, and the only water that will go into the system will be toilet water and regurgitating water out of the closet, we will not spill any water into anything, we'll use everything up, and then our dirt gets reclaimed, so, we don't have a leakage, like in hydro and other places, they have, have to find a place to flush that water out, we will not, so, I can only speak for us, and we'll certainly let you see that process so that you know that that's true, so...
Thank you. Any else, sir?
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions, do you have any on the report? Moving down the list, right now we're given the opportunity, public comments, if you station aim, 30 minutes, if you would.
Hi, will we stand?
Yeah, if you would.
You know who I am by now, every week, Lou Robertson, first of all, I want to compliment all of you, and you particularly, on that report, that progress report, I think, even though I kind of know what's going on around, it's really nice to hear that, and I wish I could remember it, when people make negative comments, it's like, well, did you know they did this and this and this and this, you know, it's kind of neat, I'm glad, happy to see that you are ready to have the first reading on your golf cart proposal today, and I have just, just a short thing, since we've been working on, and I say we, since you've been working on this, I have been doing a little research, and I found a couple of interesting things, and one is over at Lawrence on their ordinance, even though the state says that you can't charge a fee for registering your golf cart or your operator, they charge $10 for a registration sticker, so I'm wondering if that's their little niche, they're giving you a sticker, I, I just thought that was interesting. The other thing, South Havens isn't an ordinance, it's a resolution, and I pulled that up because I kept looking and looking and looking for their ordinance, couldn't find it, finally today I found the resolution that was adopted, it's number 92 of 2016, and because they have a resolution, within that resolution, they enacted the Michigan Vehicle Code, which we're using, that defines some of our golf carts, but was, and then I went to Google to see the difference between a resolution and the ordinance, and the resolution could just be changed anytime, in ordinance you have to go through your whole ordeal, you probably already know that, I didn't, but, so resolutions are easy to change, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Great, then.
I'm Adderall, we have a downtown development authority meeting on Wednesday, which is going to be open to the public and people, we encourage everybody to come to that, we're putting together our new plan, and that's gonna be an open public hearing to talk about the new DDA plan, I also would like to mention that a lot of communities have bicycle registration that they charge for a sticker, and I don't know how they do that, but I know when I was a kid, you have, you had to have a sticker and you had to pay for it, and do the same thing with dogs and...
Anything else? More public comments, then, let's keep moving down the list. At this point, I'm gonna go into a public hearing for a proposed amendment to ordinance 284, City of Bangor Medical Marijuana Ordinance, so at this point, I'm gonna go into a public hearing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and have to close the regular session, and, yeah, you should, you should move into your public hearing and then move to go out of it.
Okay, so can I get a motion to go out of our regular city council meeting, so we go into our public hearing?
Make a motion to close our meeting, go into a public meeting for ordinance number 284, Medical Marijuana Ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I have a quick question about the ordinance, I'm reading up top, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out why that says, "And to prohibit medical marijuana provision centers throughout the city," because we're not prohibiting anybody. Am I reading this wrong?
Technically, yes, no, 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 technically, yes, because, you know, the city has the loose power to allow or prohibit, you know, so that's, it's putting what's legal jargon really.
Okay, so that's just reading that, that's our right to provoke that?
Correct.
Okay, I was reading that, all right, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, most of you guys have the copies of the ordinance, number 285, to amend previous ordinance, number 284, any other changes besides that, Sterling?
Sterling has put in here that we're limiting the grow and, so the grow operations and the processing facilities to the industrial park, and the provisioning centers in the downtown area, the maximum is three, and that we can review and amend these numbers by resolution, which is good, if we decide to change it later, and then the other change, restrict a sentence in section eight, and then there were some additional conditions in section 11.
Joke freezing, this change as well. Hey, I do have another quick question, Sterling. On that section eight permit required, we got set hours of operation eight, evening to 9:00 PM Monday through Saturday, why is Sunday not included in that, is that just...
It can be amended, so where are you guys, for, you know, most communities, that's standard hours that you have.
Okay, I was just wondering why Sunday wasn't included in there, because, I mean, technically, so somebody can say, like, we can stay open all hours on Sunday, could they do that?
Can also be included as well, too, so, as I said, you know, most communities have that, so...
Okay. Well, it also says not to exceed from 8:00 AM, 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
Saturday, so you couldn't do Sunday, because you would exceed what it says there.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments on it by the council members? As it is a public hearing, if there's any type of feedback, comments from the public?
Okay, so that ordinance, I'm trying to make sure I understand, so, that's for the provisioning centers as well, so I shouldn't be open on Sundays?
That's currently how it's worded, yes.
Okay, because I presently am, but I have a problem taking the day off.
That's good, Sunday you should take a day off.
If the council disagrees, I mean, we can always make a motion to amend this and change it, but, okay?
Most I've gotten on Sundays.
Do you sell very much on Sunday?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a low day.
Yeah, nice to have a day off.
It is.
Any other questions from the public, since it is a public hearing?
We'd like to thank you, council members, for the direction you have gone with this, because it's helped people, not just in Bangor, but we have citizens coming in from 50, 60 miles away coming in to do business in Bangor now.
We're keeping a high chart of locations, of folks that are coming into Bangor, we have 429 registries as of today, since we opened on December 13, and out of that, high chart, we're doing just about 125 mile radius of what Bangor in the middle and draw a circle.
Okay, excellent.
I think it would be a nice gesture to remain closed on Sunday.
Thank you. Anyone, anybody else? All right, so at this time, you made a motion to go out of the, so at this time, we had a motion to go out of the public hearing, back into...
We make a motion that we go out of the public hearing and back into regular session.
House support.
Any more discussion on that? Let's have a roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved, we're back in regular session. So as we're back in regular session, now it's back to unfinished business, we have ordinance number 284 being amended to ordinance number 285, so can we get a motion to approve it?
I make a motion that we approve on the medical marijuana ordinance, ordinance number 285 is presented to us.
House support.
Now, we have to have one more, sorry, open hearing on that?
Just as that.
Just as that, then it's gonna be, then it's gonna...
Okay. Okay, any more discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved, we're back in a regular session. So as we're back in regular session, now it's back to unfinished business, we have ordinance number 284 being amended to ordinance number 285, so can we get a motion to approve it?
I make a motion that we approve on the medical marijuana ordinance, ordinance number 285 is presented to us.
House support.
Now, we have to have one more, sorry, open hearing on that?
Just as that.
Just as that, then it's gonna be, then it's gonna...
Okay. Okay, any more discussion on it?
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
And the resolution could just be changed any time. An ordinance you have to go through your whole ordeal. You probably already know that, I didn't. But, so resolutions are easy to change. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Great then.
I'm Matt Earl. We have a downtown development authority meeting on Wednesday, which is going to be open to the public and people. We encourage everybody to come to that. We're putting together our new plan. It's gonna be an open public hearing to talk about the new DDA plan. I also would like to mention that a lot of communities have bicycle registration if they charge for a sticker. And I don't know how they do that, but I know when I was a kid, you had to have a sticker and you had to pay for it. We do the same thing with dogs.
Anything else? More public comments then? Let's keep moving down the list. At this point, I'm gonna go into public hearing for proposal amendment to ordinance two eighty-four, City of Bangor Medical Marijuana Ordinance. So at this point, we'll go into a public hearing. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and have to close the regular session. And yeah, you should.
Yeah.
You should move into your public hearing and then move to go out of it.
Okay, so can I get a motion to go out of our regular city council meeting? So we go into our public hearing.
Make a motion to close our meeting, go into a public meeting for ordinance number two eighty-four, Medical Marijuana Ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion heard.
I have a quick question about the ordinance. I'm reading up top and I'm trying to figure out why that says, "And to prohibit medical marijuana provision centers throughout the city." Because we're not prohibiting anybody. Am I reading this wrong or...?
Technically, yes. No, 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 technically, yes. Because, you know, the city has the loose power to allow or prohibit.
Okay.
It's pretty much legal jargon, really.
Okay, so that's just reading that. That's our right to provoke that.
Correct.
Okay, I was reading that wrong. All right, thank you.
So at this point, most of you guys have the copies of the ordinance, number two eighty-five, to amend previous ordinance, number two eighty-four. Any other changes besides that, Sterling?
Sterling has put in here that we're limiting the grow in... The grow operations and the process and facilities to the industrial park and the provisioning centers in the downtown area to maximum three. And that we can review and amend these numbers by resolution, which is good, if we decide to change it later. And then the other change restricts a sentence under section eight. And then there were some additional conditions in section eleven.
Joe Cruz. Hey, I do want to know a quick question, Sterling. On that section eight permit required, we got set hours of operation eight, eight after nine P M. Monday through Saturday. Why is Sunday not included in that? Is that just a...
It can be amended, so whatever you guys prefer. You know, most communities, that's standard hours that they have.
Okay. I was just wondering why Sunday wasn't included in there. Because, I mean, technically, so somebody can say, "We can stay open all hours on Sunday."
Can also be included as well, too. So as I said, most communities have that, so.
Okay.
Well, it also says not to exceed from eight A M. nine P M. Monday through Saturday.
Saturday, so you couldn't do Sunday because you would exceed. That's what it says there.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments on it by the council members? As it is a public hearing, if there's any type of feedback, comments from the public?
Okay, so that ordinance, I'm trying to make sure I understand. So that's for the provisioning centers as well, so I shouldn't be open on Sundays?
That's currently how it's worded, yes.
Okay, because I presently am, but I have a problem taking the day off.
That's good. Sunday you should take a day off.
If the council disagrees, I mean, we can always make a motion to amend this. Okay?
Most of us have gotten on Sundays.
Do you sell very much on Sunday?
No, it's a low day.
Yeah, nice to have a day off.
Any other questions from the public, since it is a public hearing?
We'd like to thank you, council members, for the direction you have gone with this. Because it's helped people, not just in Bangor, but we have citizens coming in from fifty, sixty miles away, coming in to do business in Bangor now.
We're keeping a high chart of locations, of folks that are coming into Bangor. We have four hundred and twenty-nine registries as of today, since we opened on December thirteenth. And out of that high chart, we're doing just about a hundred and twenty-five mile radius to put Bangor in the middle and draw a circle.
Okay, excellent.
I think it would be a nice gesture to remain closed on Sunday.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so at this time, we have a motion. So this motion, at this time, we have a motion to go out of the public hearing.
Make a motion that we go out of the public hearing and back into regular session?
No support.
Any more discussion on that? Let's have a roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Alama?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Harbor? Yes, Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. We're back in a regular session. So as we're back in regular session, let's back to unfinished business. We have ordinance number two eighty-four being amended to ordinance number two eighty-five. So can we get a motion to approve it?
Make a motion that we approve the medical marijuana ordinance. Ordinance number two eighty-five is presented to us.
No support.
Now, we have to have one more. Sorry? Open hearing on that?
This is it. This is it. Then it's gonna be, then it's gonna be published.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Alama?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Harbor? Yes. Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. And amended ordinance number two eighty-five. Also, we have a mileage resolution, S S B P P, for renewal and new with the annual report.
These are the senior service mileage questions, and it is at renewal. So the first one is just for the renewal of the quarter mil. They are asking for an increase of a quarter mil. And the second, so the second resolution is if you choose to put that one on the ballot as well. This will be on the ballot in August. And then there's a some, a fat sheet on the front. The services are growing, and as a matter of fact, there was a poll done just recently, and twenty-four percent of them here in county is sixty or older.
So basically, what we're doing is looking at two different potential proposals here.
Two different.
One is to renewal the existing mileage that we have for senior services for Bangor County. So we'd like to have a motion to renew the current proposal.
I make a motion that we approve the previously voted mileage of two point five mils for renewal. What you're approving is just to put it on the ballot.
Right, right.
No support.
Any more discussion? Let's do a roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Alama?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Harbor? Yes. Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. Can we do that all in one?
There are two second ones. This one's actually a new, this one's an increase. It's an increase of a quarter mil.
And this increase of a mil would be for the ballot.
That'll go on in August, too.
So if anybody want to make a motion, you'd be able to put a new resolution on for the ballot for the next.
I'll make a motion allowing the senior services to add a mileage increase of point two five mils to be on the May ballot. Support. August, or August.
Support. Any more discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Alama?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Harbor? Yes. Householder?
Yes.
Motion approved. So new business now, we have the golf cart first reading.
Number three, we just need to change that to a federal highway to M forty-three highway.
Where were you at, Lynn?
In the front page, number three, a person shall not operate a golf cart on state trunk line highway, including, and it should say M forty-three highway.
Change that to M forty-three.
I have a question about number eight. Golf cart shall not be operated on public streets during the time period from one half hour before sunset to one half hour after sunrise. And that, of course, varies day by day, you know, throughout the year. Do they have to have lights? They won't have turn signals, they won't have lights, they won't have brake lights. Basically, most of them use like the slow moving vehicle sign. So I guess maybe you ought to clarify that.
Well, I think especially a half an hour before sunset is when it's dusk and it would be hard to see them and you wouldn't want them to be.
And it varies anywhere from four in the afternoon till ten o'clock at night in the summer.
Right.
So that, I think, varies some.
Does the motor vehicle code require them to have headlights or not?
Yes.
Okay, so it does require that.
They have to have headlights and turn signals.
Yeah, you have to.
Use hand signals. Use hand signals.
It says hand signals on here.
Yeah, hand signals.
Most of them will have a headlight and taillight.
Not yet, Danny.
It's coming.
I'm kind of thinking we have to keep this during daylight hours. You know, and then if we change our mind, we can change it by resolution or something later. But, you know, they're gonna be hard enough to see.
We could extend that period maybe to an hour before sunset. So that they get off the streets.
How many different bicycles?
I think a half hour of bicycles.
A half hour sufficient. I think you just don't want them there when it's, you know, when it's dusk or when it's early morning, when somebody couldn't see them. And, you know, they would be putting themselves in danger. We don't want that to happen.
They don't want to be out there in the dark anyway. How many shadows are pulling from you on a bicycle at ten o'clock at night?
Oh, yeah.
You know, that's what I'm saying. You've got a chance of people just not using their heads. And this is the concrete for the police to use, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you know, I like, maybe we could kind of change one for three to also include. And we're having Apple Fest or some festival downtown. Do we want to ban the golf carts from it? I mean, it's common, they bring their golf carts in. But with how we got station number three, number three written, they can't even do it potentially then since it's a state highway.
Well, once we need to understand, too, I mean, it's a local ordinance. So police department, Tommy, whoever's in charge, can go ahead and ignore it. It's an exception, can wait until it's like.
Because the road would be closed anyway.
As I was saying, the road would be closed.
Roads, well, I would say you're under a new set of rules.
Okay, as long as we all understand that, it's not an amendment, with our minutes or whatever else, I mean, it's a, we typically have problems.
And at that point, you can only cross M forty-three. You can't drive down M forty-three. So I think that's already clarified in here that we're gonna allow them to cross because if they want to go from, like, say, Center Street to Harding's, they've got to cross M forty-three. But, you know, it already says that you can't drive down a main truck. So I think we're fine with that.
Yeah, but during Apple Fest or any of those festivals, the road shut down. We're not gonna have too much complaints once it goes back to our police chief. He doesn't have a problem.
And that would be up to the committee, too.
Right, right.
Is it typical for a person to have to have a license in order to drive a golf cart? The way it's written in here? Because I know in a lot of places, don't drive golf carts. You can be eight years old driving one. But saying here, you gotta be licensed to operate.
I think we're trying to avoid eight-year-olds driving.
Driving golf carts.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, so what if you have a twenty-two-year-old who doesn't have a license? Can they ride, drive that golf cart or, you know? The way it's written, it says no.
Says no.
Right, so, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
But a twenty-two-year-old probably doesn't have a license because he got a DUI.
That's where I'm going with it. So if you have a...
That's why they lost their license.
To their golf cart because they can't drive a car.
I mean, I'm just talking about like a lot of kids now, seventeen years old. A lot of kids don't get their license till they're eighteen. And you're saying they can't drive a golf cart unless they have a driver's license. I mean, that, I don't know.
That's where you guys look at it.
I don't know.
Well, I think, again, you want to protect the city liability-wise because if you're saying that they have to have a driver's license, then you're protecting the city from a little bit more liability than... I always tell my insurance, you can let an eight-year-old drive your car. I wouldn't suggest that, but you can, you know. So I just think that we're putting parameters there to, you know, kind of limit the liability.
I like being a licensed driver because you're gonna have to learn the rules of the road to get your driver's license.
Yeah, same thing like number thirteen, a person operates a golf cart. I mean, public police must procure liability insurance sufficient to cover the risks involved in using a golf cart in the city. So if you're twenty-two years old, you got any liability coverage? Probably not.
Or a license.
Yeah, license is all liability.
Okay, I'll leave it as is.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with it the way it is.
Okay, so we do look at the modified changes to it, which I think all we came up with was, read earlier, the M forty-three. Let her update it, then we come back and we go back to another public hearing. Then we can vote on it and propose it.
Do we need another public hearing or can we just...
Yes, you can't vote on it.
Unless it's a finished thing. Okay.
Yes. Any questions, comments on that? We'll talk about that on our next meeting. Another one was the Parks and Recs five-year plan, thirty-year review period questionnaire in public hearing. Which recommendation did Regina?
Well, I've, Rich Green and I have been working on this, and then he got kind of sick, but then we're back at it. But this is going to be the cover for the five-year plan. And we've got a questionnaire online, which is pretty much ready to go live. So what I wanted to do, and I've got someone to help me with the maps. Johnson and Anderson have reviewed the draft and they said it looks good. It just, it needs some editing, so I was doing that. They've got a source of some maps for us, but they read it, gave us recommendations, have shown us where to get the charts, and will do some maps for us. And all the help they are giving us will be four hundred and fifty dollars, which is really nice, and the rest we'll kind of put together. But I noticed that when Larry was here, they did a thirty-day comment period, and that overlapped their questionnaire time, and then they did the public hearing. We've got to have this end by March first of this year in order to be able to get any D N R grants. So if I can get permission to go ahead and publish for the public hearing and the thirty-day comment period, that puts us somewhere between February twenty-two and February twenty-six for the public hearing. And then we could get it uploaded to the D N R so that we could finally be back where we need to be with the Parks and Rec plan. So I just wanted permission to go ahead and, and then I was thinking, if we do that public hearing, maybe we could combine it with the golf cart. That shouldn't take too long to complete and then do this one at the same time.
So I guess Regina's setting us up to what date should we schedule our next meeting?
Well, I don't know. It depends on when I can get it published. So why don't we just say for somewhere to be scheduled, the public hearing to be scheduled somewhere between the twenty-second and the twenty-sixth of February? Because it will fall in there somewhere. There's a weekend in there, I won't schedule it on that. I promise.
So I want to make a motion for that? How you want to word it?
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing on the dates between February twenty-two and twenty through the twenty-sixth for the Parks and Rec five-year plan, thirty-year review period.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Thirty-day review period. And to include the public hearing and the golf cart ordinance.
Support.
Can I amend that? So we also give authorization, Regina, to publish it?
Yeah. Need a motion to give her authorization to publish this.
I amend that to your current motion.
I'd like to amend my motion to authorize Regina to have the ordinance as published.
Steve, you support the amended Fred's motion? Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments on that? Roll call? Roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Alama?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Harbor? Yes. Householder?
Yes. Next one would be our second quarter amendment meeting date. Can we do that?
Yeah, I'm thinking we can do it during the regular meeting. We're having a, having a little bit of a problem with some of the, some of the figures, like the parks mileage isn't going into the general ledger line like it should. We can see where we've collected a little over four grand of that, but it's not showing up in the general ledger. And then we're also, the road funds are also doing the same thing. They're, they're, we're cash receiving it, but then it's not going into the general ledger page, which makes it kind of hard to amend the budget when the money isn't showing. So I want to try to get the amendments done by the second meeting in February. And I try to. We're not overspent anywhere, and we're well, we're well within our fifty percent or less for the half of the year. So I would just like, I just wanted you to know that we're having a few issues. The leafback kind of went in as a total expenditure, which overspent some, and that's not what it was. It was a loan that came in and went out. And so we're trying to get with B S and A to see exactly how to make those show up correctly. I just wanted to let you know, we're working on it.
So we'll do that. We'll go over it on, like, February nineteenth. That's our second meeting.
Unless, and I was thinking, if our public hearing is set, happens to get set with the twenty-second, we might want to maybe just move the meeting from Monday to Thursday.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to you guys, but we could discuss that at the first meeting in February. See where everything is. Yeah, by then, I'll know now.
Okay. Okay, our next one is also, we have some planning commission recommendation. So our last planning commission, we were, two things went on. One was approve special use permit for Hydro LLC for a provisional center located at one thirty-five West Monroe.
And planning commission recommended that we approve.
And Michael Beddine is here. If you have any questions, he's representing Hydro LLC.
It is Hydro, I don't see it's not Hydro.
Hydro, yeah. Excuse me, sorry. That's A, A, no. And then with Hydro LLC. Go ahead.
In the planning meeting, I did not have any plans, but if anyone has a question as far as the layout and the inside and all that, I do have some kind of floor layout inside and on those plans. And also you have a security overview, which is the next page, that shows cameras like inside, out of the place, and every single room and all that, and the way the facility actually will be designed to meet the state criteria. And I kind of laid out, if anyone has got a concern about the process or the procedure or how this thing here works out, instead of having it in the booklet, it does show like the point of entry, the one they deal with the security, they deal with the receptionist, and how would they get into the bathroom or the point of sale, so. But this is basically will meet the state criteria. Even every single room will have cameras and... That's the cameras everywhere. And in every single room, we have to have cameras, even in the storage room, so that we employees won't even hide anything and everything is monitored. And we even have cameras on the outside to have access to the police. They sit down and state roles, police will have everything else.
I got a question. Who actually owns this company?
It's the Hydro LLC, we just form the corporation right now.
Who are the members?
The members?
Yeah.
I'm not disclosing the members right now.
Okay, I got them. It's, it's all right. It's a, currently, we're in a meeting in city council. So it's up to the city council member to discuss by asking questions.
Is there any reason you don't want to disclose who's...
Well, in this kind of businesses, you don't have to. But I will say one thing, that we do not have anything anywhere else. There is Hydro Depot, there is Hydro Giant, there is so many different Hydras. This is Hydro. And since we have the offer actually under Hydro, since we get the approvals of planning commission, we'll form the corporation for this one here right now. So we go on in with a new corporation and this one. It's just the purchase agreement. When we put it in, we'll put it on the Hydro LLC.
Are you located in Michigan?
Yes.
You're in Grand Rapids?
No, we're not really, we have nothing in Grand Rapids. We're actually out of Bloomfield Hills. We are not in Grand Rapids, we have nothing in Grand Rapids. I might know what you guys are talking about. Yeah, we have nothing in Grand Rapids. The Grand Rapids has not even opted any, and we have no location or anything in Grand Rapids.
So speaking to our attorney right now, we can't really make a motion to approve dispensary for this because technically, they don't own the property yet.
Well, it is under a purchase agreement. We do have a purchase agreement.
I don't understand that, but nobody has signed it. As of this morning, Jennifer, who's the associate, we checked with the realtor, and we haven't heard anything at all. So technically, the city still owns the property.
So we...
The city still owns it?
Yes, the city owns the property. Here's no sign.
Yeah, it is under purchase agreement. Contingence on the approval. You cannot buy a location without, we do have a contingency. If it gets approved, so the purchase agreement goes through.
We're going back and forth monitoring, I'll let Jennifer, it's monitoring that the realtor went back to the purchaser, have yet to hear back from whomever the buyer is. You know, nobody has agreed upon, there's a proposal on the table, but nobody has agreed upon that proposal yet because we've made some changes sending back to, to the buyer.
There was a new purchase agreement sent back to Hydra. And there, I was told this morning that they're still looking at opening.
I thought there is a contingency in it. So you have it, it's already signed with a contingency.
Not aware of that. And there's really, the city owns the property as of right now.
I do have a P A. right here. And then we're not doing all this work here, getting the property or like, without even having a purchase agreement.
No, you can have a purchase agree, I mean, a proposal, but nobody has agreed upon that. And I mean, as I said, as of this morning, we have yet to hear back from, from the buyer. The realtor, Mr. Rhodes, said that he's still waiting to hear back from, from the buyer.
Jennifer, I didn't know about that. Can you bring me back here, Jennifer?
I think we're gonna have to until we get it.
Zenleaf was purchased prior to, wasn't it?
That's right.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be, because, I mean, technically, you know, it's just the city owns the property or D D A.
Can it be subject to the purchase agreement?
Well, there are some changes that we made, and until, until and unless everything's ironed out, I don't think it would be proper to, to have that contingency based, based on that.
So once you have the signed papers, then we can vote on this.
Correct, correct, because, you know, I mean, quite frankly, part of the agreement stating that from the buyer, if there's any liability, you know, the city or the buyer has, you know, hold the entrance, and then, you know, they pretty much can walk away at any time, so it's still the proceeds. So that's one of the language, part of the language I had an issue with. So sent back to, to the purchaser, so I don't think we'll be in those. So sent back to, to the purchaser, so I don't think it would be in the city's best interest to, as, as written right now, to before.
Not even with a contingency. Then if this, if the purchase work, if we work out the deal with the city and we sign up, then this thing goes through, and we have it with a contingency. Contingent don't be on the sign up or whatever it is, so.
But what you're saying, Sterling, right now, is because there are no signatures on any of these things, you know, if we, if we, if we made this motion now to let Hydra LLC have their special use permit, they don't technically own it, we technically own it, so that liability falls back on the city at this point, not on Hydra LLC at this point.
Even at, at the state level too, you know, with the license, they have to go and do a town search or deep search. I mean, it's, there's no conveyance from the city to, to the buyer.
Yeah, they have to vet actually the owner of the property. So this way here, like you're saying, that would be vetted in the city, but I don't understand that. So because they're part owner right now and it's still under name. But I mean, how can we have a purchase agreement? How can we sign if we don't have an approval? I mean, that's a contingency. We do have a contingency in the PA, and the time we'll sign the paperwork is when this thing is approved. Contingent, we'll buy the property contingent on this approval. That's exactly how it is.
And with all due respect, I think, you know, I have a little difference of opinion though. So there's a proposal, it's not a signed purchase agreement. It's a proposal, and we made some changes, you know what? A, Mr. Rhodes, can you go ahead and tell the buyer, you know, this language right here, you know, if you can go ahead and change that? For example, right, the venue, they have it in Oakland County, yes, the property is located here in Van Grant County. If there's any dispute, why go all the way to Oakland County where it can go to Van Grant County where the property is located? So that, that, these are some of the issues that I have, that I have, so.
This would not have to go back to the planning commission?
Oh, no, 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 not at all.
No, we could just, once, once that agreement is signed, then we just at that point say, yes, we grant you your special use permit.
That is correct.
Well, the purchase agreement don't have a contingency that they're gonna give us special use permit.
That, that's what we have in it, I'm just trying to pull it out, but we do have.
Yeah, but nobody has signed it yet, that's right.
The city doesn't have a sign, our attorney and the city doesn't have a copy of the sign, the signed proposal.
Correct, nobody's signed anything. There's no signature on the city, there's no signature whatsoever.
Second item, probably out here, it's just downloading. Just want to double check before. That's the period I have, we do have a signature here, we signed it.
Right, but we didn't sign it, we changed it, and then we sent you back a new one to review.
Well, okay, there's only one signature, you require two signatures, but there's none underfoot of the city here.
Correct.
It would have been required on both parties, not just one.
I mean, like, we're agreeing to it, that's what I'm trying to say, we already signed, so we're just waiting for the city actually to go to sign on it. That's what I'm trying to get at.
No, what I'm saying though, so as, as written right now, there are some issues that we, we noticed, as I said, for instance, the venue and so on and so forth. So it's not, you know, it's just missing the signature, you know, the city signature, unless and until everybody agrees on the changes that were supposed to be made.
But I'm saying, since it is missing, it's not missing our signature, it's missing the city's signature, why can't we just approve this one here, contingents on the city signature and ask, okay, whatever venues needs to be done.
We can't do that, they don't, they don't, they don't own it. And I don't think there's going to be a problem, once that agreement is signed, for the city then to say, yes, we grant you your special use permit.
That's what it is, what can I say?
We just got you the new document where you signed it, bring it back, we re-sign it, then we can vote on it.
And really, I mean, it's not much changes at all, it's just like, you know, minor.
That, that's what I'm saying, it's not actually a lot changed, it's just like, we'll come.
But we've been trying to get ahold of the realtor, and he said that he was waiting on the, on the buyer.
And then we'll deal with it right away, so. And then do we have to go for another public hearing?
No, no, no.
Just come back here and?
Just come back here and then we vote and say, yes, we grant you your special use permit.
And our next meeting will be the first Monday?
So it's easy.
February?
Well, that's right.
Which means?
Mm-hmm, just a few days, yeah.
Yeah, it would be February fifth.
Two weeks.
Okay.
No problem. Kind of leave this extra copper here?
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Then the, the next one that was approved by the planning commission before to the City Council would be Medican LLC special use permit. Do they provide a site plan as requested?
Yeah, we do, we have an updated site plan with renderings of the, the outbuildings, so we have them on, new brochures that are updated, plus larger coppers that you guys can share and take a look at also. So we have all that information for you.
That was one of the recommendations from the planning commission, since it was not proposed in our last meeting. And we told them they want to put it on the table.
Just making sure that, the, the smaller versions in here? But this will be a little bit easier for them.
It also has some pictures of the greenhouse, as well as the warehouse building.
The outbuilding? We have the renderings in there for you too.
That one is different from the one you saw the other day, there, this is, this is, looks similar, but it has updated pictures and diagrams. I know you saw it, you've seen this a couple times already, but there's, there's updates to it. Some of the, the, the exact location of the building and the greenhouse and the site plan is going to be contingent and just a couple of things as far as, once we clear the land and grade it, it's, it's expected to be very close to that, but it's not going to be exact.
The back third's wetland, so depending on what we fill.
How far we can get in.
The site planning is going to depend on the orientation of the actual structures that are on it. So you'll have the greenhouse structures on there with the attached warehouse.
Well, we'll have the required setbacks, as well as fencing around it. The parking lot, I believe, is also updated on the, on this latest site plan.
What are the greenhouse and facilities going to be consistently made up?
The greenhouse?
The buildings, what are you making your buildings up?
It's going to be a similar, it's going to be a very basic structure.
Steel. It'll be steel walls?
Steel walls.
So basically, it's a secured structure from the sides, but using the advantage of the side for the greenhouse scenario. So security obviously is utmost for us and the community, obviously, so we've taken that into consideration.
The walls of the greenhouse are solid, and it's basically a building with a glass roof.
You keep talking about wetlands, you're thinking about putting a surface water pond, add a pond there somewhere to dry it up a little bit?
If we have the room for it, we can do that, that would be ideal. I'm not sure if we're gonna have the room for it back with the wetland. It depends how it all grades out, once the site is cleared.
We don't actually know how deep it is in the back, to see how easy that is to be accomplished, to be quite honest with you. So as we get into the site planning a little bit, we'll see what's most cost effective at the end of the day, because we've talked to the neighbors, you know, they assured us that they're standing water towards the back part of the property year round, but nobody seems to know how deep that. I mean, I'm sure you guys have never had any, any calls back there, it's right between flash, between Barbara packaging, so, you know, we reached out to Barbara right away and found out, you know, it's like, yeah, there's wet all year round. And he didn't, he wasn't sure on how far what, but you know, we went by there again today, and then obviously with all the snow melt, it's, it's a little bigger.
It's pretty wet.
I can assure you, there's nothing but wet this sector, yes. And it's almost all the way to, it's almost all the way to the railroad tracks.
Actually, and I mentioned it earlier this evening, we are very concerned about what's going in our city sewer system. So if you have irrigation water that you can't just run it down the sewer.
And we know that, Harold, and you know what we're, we're considering with that? And we are reclaiming as much as possible also, we're doing more of an organic drill than we are hydro or anything like that. So we are very cognizant of the fact that reclaiming everything, including the dirt also. I didn't want to speak up when Mark was talking, but very similar, you can come out and inspect whatever you like to do, but yeah, it's a high concern for us. Go ahead, Harold.
Pitch in our public comment on.
Go ahead, pitch in.
So I haven't met with you guys yet, but as far as security, when he says there's gates and everything, I have been working with Tommy. Most of you all know that, you know, we have the Knox box keys that gets us in all the buildings that have alarm systems. And so all these new facilities will be required to have a double key Knox box in the police department, since by law you have, the police has to have access to the, to the building as well. And so, so all these new facilities will have a dual key access for us and for the police department. The businesses downtown will also have the same, and so we're having a special order, well, not a special order, but, but the police department is getting on board with us with the Knox box system. And so, so they're carrying one key that'll be able to get them in all the, in all the boxes along with us, the fire department will as well. So this is something that's new that we're having to change and do along with. And so I contacted the Knox Corporation, and they make, you know, the dual, have fire and police locks.
He's a lieutenant currently, I have retired lieutenant, so very.
Yeah, and so they have, you know, and so, so it's very simple, and we're also going to be putting that same system at eight twenty-second street, because we're going there quite a bit, and the police get there first and waiting for us to get in, so they'll be able to have access to that building with a dual, a dual lock system. And so they're just now starting to open that up to the police side where it was never about that. Well, now with the laws changing where they have to allow police and fire access to these buildings, they've changed it to a dual. And so just to let everybody know that we'll be working with, I've already met with Mark and gave him a flyer, you know, so they have to put these on the buildings and then get all ready for us prior to, to opening, so.
As well as having an updated list of contact lists of, you know, for, for emergency contacts.
Alarm system contacts, all that stuff will be, you know, will be updated as the plan progresses and we're starting to take point.
Any other questions, comments for those gentlemen? Danny, Fred, any comments?
It took so long. It wasn't this.
So, so at this point, can we get a motion to approve the Medican LLC special use permit?
I make a motion that we approve the Medican LLC special use permit.
I support.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I, you know.
On parcel eighty dash fifty-four dash eight-one-two dash zero-six-three dash zero-zero in the industrial park.
So motion, second by Fred, go ahead, Harold, now, any comments?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just make it clear, we're giving a special use permit to an individual, and it doesn't go with the property, if you sell it the property, that next person doesn't automatically have a special use permit. But they would have to apply, just like you guys did.
We, we have no intention to do that, Harold, at all. We've been here since the beginning, you know that.
Well, actually, you were the very first one.
Well, I didn't want to say that, I just wanted to say, we were in the beginning, so I thought that was close enough.
And I've heard your presentation at least twice, so.
And that's not just for the grooming, that's also for any type of dispensaries, anything else, the license, not go with it, they can try to sell it, who would still have to come back around the City Council for the blessing?
There's some state regulations to that too. And you can refer right to Laura's website.
Are we in, are we in public comments?
No.
Okay.
Okay, any more comments? Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alman?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Harmer? Yes. Householder?
Yes, motion approved. So going down the list.
Yeah, I'm doing the site plan too.
Okay, do the site plan. So also they did put a application in for the site plan. So can we get a motion to approve this site plan?
I'll make a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve the site plan for Medican.
I support.
Any more discussion? A roll call, please?
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alman?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Harmer? Yes. Householder?
Yes, motion approved. Any guess about it, for the planning commission recommendations? Now, this time it's back for upcoming public, public comments.
Thank you, sir. Hi, my name's Marson. So I just want to be clear on the whole recommendation of the special use permit. When we came in, like these gentlemen, we presented ourselves, our family, our business, who we were, so you could vet us, meet us, talk to us, get to know us as individuals. And this gentleman here won't even let us know who's coming in to the town. I have a good idea who that is, and if it is what I think it is, there needs to be some vetting down there, is my opinion. So I'm just trying to understand why that has a different process than the rest of us, and I think it should be the process that you put us through, so it's vigorous. You're vetting us, you're getting to know us, before someone just shows up into the town and starts doing something that we may regret later.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Thank you. I want to thank the board.
Thank you very much.
The planning commission for being patient with us. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up. In reference to what we talked about with the golf cart, the majority of everything that was included in that is all part of the Michigan vehicle code, and it's exactly like other communities have. And in reference to the sixteen-year-old, these license drivers and liability insurance, I would hope that they lived at home and it would be included under the rider on their parents' home insurance, home of the insurance, which is what I'm doing, not on my parents', but my. So that, that kind of it. You know, it, it's really a basic, basic thing, really, as far as traffic signals and, you know, the old arm signals we'll be using, and not, not having lights on it, none of that's required. Although, I suppose if I put lights on it wet downtown after dark, I'm not sure if I'd be in violation or not. I could be, so, that's it, guys.
Thank you.
Casey Alday, I have a question for Ms. Lu. You do need a driver's license to operate a golf cart, right?
Yes.
Okay, I really think that's a good idea?
Yeah, sixty, it's the state law, I really have no choice, sixteen and over.
Really?
Yes.
If you have a private property?
Uh, it'll be driving around the yard, no, it's public estate.
I can remember, right, remember when Cliff had his stroke and he was only allowed to drive his lawnmower around? He had to get a special use from the council to be able to drive his lawn, because he couldn't operate a vehicle if he had a, because of the stroke, but he could operate the lawnmower, and that's how he got around town for six months till his driver's license came back. Just some history there.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Going down the list, at this time, we don't have any board commission appointments correspondents. And let's go ahead and start with the City Council member comments, okay?
I can talk tonight.
Sounds better.
A lot better. I'm glad we're moving in the direction we seem to be moving. I agree with what Mr. Smith had to say. I don't think the rules should be changed for anybody or any corporation or whatever. We ask for a presentation for these people, and when somebody tells me, no, I'm not going to disclose who we're sending here, who owns the property, or who the use permit's for, I have a problem with that. And I think everybody in this council ought to ask that question, because why have it one way for some people and a different way for somebody else? I don't like somebody sneaking into my backyard. That's what it looks like, that's all I got to say.
Fred?
I guess I was under the impression that the planning commission did get a presentation from these guys, so they never did?
I don't think so.
Because they, they sent up the recommendations saying that, advising us to go with it, so I just assumed they did have it. So I guess I could agree with Danny on that. So I guess I don't understand, what is there about not wanting to disclose their, the owners? I mean, I know it's a law that they don't have to, but why would you not want to? That is a concerning thing.
We know the state's going to do the background check, that's fine, but we have every right as a city to meet these people and greet them and shake their hands, but that is a good possibility. to be a possibility.
I'll be back again in a few weeks.
That's all I have. I don't want to lose the building, being sold either, but.
Steve?
Just my sympathy for Norma's family.
Thank you, Steve. Lynn?
And there is going to be a memorial for her on Thursday at Simpson from 3 to 5, so I think it would be who, any of us that can to attend. Have we gone anywhere in the Carriage House demolition?
We're in a 10-day state required waiting period, or notification period.
Okay, so after the 19th date, we have to wait 10 more days till the 29th?
It'll be approximately the 29th.
Okay, then what happens?
Well, depends on if there's any asbestos in the building or not, that's when, there's been some material sent off for analysis, hopefully there is not, I can't imagine there will be any in there.
Now, would the city be reimbursed if we tear it down?
Yeah, pay down the taxes and we...
Well, I just think that we have to do something, because it's, it's obviously dangerous to a lot of people, so, I mean, of course they want us to follow the law, but we do need to get it down as soon as we possibly can. Two other things that I have, I was reading in the paper the other day that Bridgman is having trouble with their sewer ponds right now, because the water from their microbrewery place is, their sewer ponds are not big enough to accommodate that, so they're like panicking because, you know, they may have to have new sewer ponds or whatever, so as we're getting our microbrewery here, that might be something for us to consider. I talked to Harold about it today, and he's gonna talk to Randy and see if our sewer ponds can accommodate that, because evidently Bridgman's having a lot of trouble with the waste from, and, and they're expanding the brewery now, so that is causing them a problem as well. And then the other thing is, I did notice several Amish buggies in town the other day, and I think at some point we may want to consider hitching posts, and having those so they don't have to tie them to our light posts. So I think that's something that we might want to look into and just figure out if there are a couple places in town where we could put hitching posts so that we can accommodate them, because I did see two Amish buggies actually go by my office the other day, so...
Right behind the bank.
I'm not saying where we should put them, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, if we're going to have them, we probably want to do some kind of an accommodation, like I said, not to have them tying their horses to our light poles, so I think that might be something that we might want to look around and consider if we've got a couple places where we could maybe make those hitching posts, so, that's all I have.
Bangor Township has over 12 Amish families this year that have moved in, and it's planning on way more than that. Already put a school in on 48, and everything, just some, some history, and maybe consider Amish, the buggy signage around town. They ended up having to put signage on 687, the main roads that they're traveling, but they're coming into town now, maybe talk to M dot to see if they can put some signage up. Didn't mean to interrupt, but they, they, that's something that they're, you know, really anticipating for and knowing.
Because they are coming to town, and I think the more families we get, the more of them will come, because they have to get groceries, they have to bank, they have to do all the things that the rest of us do, and, you know, we also, in thinking about the hitching posts, might want to think about, you know, if their horses poop, what are we gonna have them, you know, are we gonna have, are we gonna provide a trash barrel? What are we gonna do to take care of that? So, I think those are just things that we need to think about in the future, because if we're getting more of them, we really need to, I think, do some accommodation for them, so.
Gina?
Well, I just wanted to say, say it's good to see our buildings being utilized in town, and we have all these businesses coming to Bangor, which is, which is good. Yeah, make sure we send our prayers and thoughts to Norma's family, and at the moment, that's all I have.
Thank you, Gina. I can pray that Mary and Steve, Norma, our prayers are with her and her family. You guys just keep up the work, keep the pedal down, always keep moving, we're doing the right things, we get a lot of comments about the city. Keep doing you guys' work, because, you know, Gina's running the city, she's our job overseer, and we're doing it, we're working fine together, just keep moving. We hope that, get prepared, some more colder weather coming in soon, so, enjoy the winter. At this time, I'd like to have a motion adjourned meeting.
Do a triplets.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think we have. Three, four.
Maybe six of us have given up.
All in favor? All opposed?
Actually, I'll grab the chair. I know somebody that's downstairs, closes their yard, doesn't really want to be, or is a side runner, uses a hose, it's hanging that way, like you.